Good evening, everybody. This is a call to order of the Village of Oklaun Board of Trustees' regular meeting agenda. We're meeting here today in the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2025-14, Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, 7:30 p.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vorderer?
Present.
Trustee Desmond?
Mayor?
Okay.
Oh, Tim, we gotta get a motion to allow you to participate here. Okay.
So moved.
Do the roll call first.
Yeah.
Well, you have a motion now to allow trustee Desmond to participate by phone. Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
No, the five that are here.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Trustee Sack?
Here.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes, on the motion.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes, on the motion.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes, on the motion.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good evening, Tim. Can you hear us?
Good evening.
Good.
Now do the roll call.
Mayor Vorderer?
Present.
Trustee Desmond?
He's here.
Here.
Trustee Sack?
Here.
Trustee Pembroke?
Here.
Trustee Olenicek?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stocker?
Here.
We have a quorum. Please join me in to pledge allegiance. Veterans, please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Madam Clerk, or no, Kim.
Yes.
Do we have comments?
There are some sign-ups, yes.
Okay.
Kristin Damiac? Damiac?
Hi, Kristin.
I'm here.
Are you an Oklaun resident?
I am not an Oklaun resident.
Well, welcome to Oklaun.
Thank you very much. Been here quite a few times. My name is Kristin. I'm from Joliet. But as you may recall, Oklaun Police Department took my dad's dog to Animal Welfare League, and she sat there for 16 days. Mayor, I requested a Zoom call with you to discuss Animal Welfare League and the contract that your police chief signed up in July. You declined and couldn't take 15 minutes in private, so I'll speak here publicly today. Your response to me was that Animal Welfare League tells you they follow the letter of the law while blocking the public from viewing animals. You also told me you're not an attorney, it's not your role to judge, and suggested I contact the proper authorities. Fair enough. I'm going to direct this to your police chief and village attorney, who both ignored me before and after they approved this atrocity of a contract. To say the least, it's a complete disaster, so sloppy that a child could have rent it. Yet the police chief signed it, the taxpayer-funded attorney, Mr. Melody, approved it, even though it clearly states Oklaun's very own impoundment ordinance. The ordinance is pretty straightforward and doesn't require a law degree to understand it. You just need to read it. I'll summarize, since apparently nobody decided to do that. It states that after 72 hours of apprehension, this kind of dog or cat can be relinquished to animal. It also says that when an owner comes forward for their dog, the police department must redeem the pet to the owner. The whole point of a stray hold is for the owner to be able to find their dog as soon as possible. But guess what? That's not what happens. My dad's dog was brought there by your police department. We found her within three hours, and in another recent patch story, you brought another dog there immediately. Both of our families found our dogs quick, but guess what? By that point, they were already locked away in cages, rotted Animal Welfare League. Then their employees taunted and tried to humiliate my father for 16 days, acting as if deciding who owns a dog is their personal right. They even told him they didn't have to give him his dog back. For your residents, this is the norm. And what was your village's best advice for us to get our pets back? Call a lawyer in the Department of Agriculture. Really? Had you followed your own frickin' ordinance? None of this would have even happened. Now, I'll address this joke of a contract. It doesn't even state pricing or the requirements for your residents to redeem their pets, but it does claim that the police hand a stray over to Animal Welfare League, and it automatically belongs to them. Not only is that false, it's illegal under your own contract, or under your own ordinance. That's just the beginning, and I don't even have time to get through the rest of this mess. So let me be crystal clear. Animal Welfare League has been illegally holding strays, violating state laws, and preventing families from reclaiming their animals for years. And the police chief and the village attorney, who should absolutely know better, signed off on it. Starting tomorrow, I suggest you start following your own ordinance and look for a contract that actually is beneficial to your residents. Because not only is this bad judgment, it's unlawful, irresponsible, and it's shameful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mallow, let me talk to my dad.
Paul Buck?
Hello?
Hi, Paul. You're an Oklaun resident?
I'm a Chicago resident.
Okay.
It's my dog.
Welcome to Oklaun.
Yeah, thank. My dog got out one night, and she was picked up about two hours later that Saturday night. And Sunday morning, I contacted my daughter. She posted it in all the websites on the Internet, and she called all the local police departments. And about two hours after she contacted Oklaun Police Department, the officer, I guess he came on duty, and stated that he took the dog the night before to Animal Welfare. And he described the dog, what he dropped off. A lab pit bull with a pink collar with a white marking on the breast. Okay, that knowing that Animal Welfare doesn't open up until Monday morning about nine o'clock, I looked up online. And I went there at nine o'clock, but there was a sign on the doors. I was there before nine. But there was a sign on the door, not open until 11:00, whatever. So I was walking back to the car, and noticed this gentleman walking to the door. He got inside. I said, well, they must have opened it up. So I'm over there, and the door is locked. Oh, wow. So I was calling her to tell her, and then I happened to see this lady walk by, so I knocked on the door, and she opened the door, and she asked what I needed. I said, my dog was picked up, dropped off over here, and then we're here now. 16 days later, I got my dog back. I had to adopt it. So that's not. And by the time I got the dog back, the dog was so stressed out, losing hair, it was so. Yeah, right. They said, oh, she gained five pounds, and she lost about 10 pounds. And she really, it didn't look like the dog that I had when she got out. I was like, holy cow. It's. I had dogs that got out of the yard before, and they took it there. You walked in, like in a holding area, and you walked to her, and you said, that's my dog. And they gave it to you after you paid, if they needed shots, they would have gave you shots. And you got your dog that day, not 16 days later, you know, telling you, no, that's not your dog, you're not going to get it, it's our dog, and this and that. That's BS. People are going through hell. That's their pets. That's part of the family. So that's all I got to say. You got to change the, you know, something. I know you guys got to change. You got to take the dog somewhere, but you got to tell them, when you drop it off, you got to go by the ordinance. Hey, you're holding the dog for us for 72 hours, then it belongs to you guys. But 72 hours, they still belong to you, not to Animal Welfare. That's you. I guess you hired them to watch the pets after you pick them up.
Your time up.
So now, okay.
Okay, you have three minutes left.
Kim Wotonic?
Again, I'm Kim Wotonic. And everything I'm going to say is either my opinion, what I think, or a fact. We're gonna, I would like to take a little bit different look of Animal Welfare League. I'm saying that it's my opinion because Animal Welfare League sued me for defamation. I want the freedom of speech to be protected in all the recordings and transcripts from tonight's meeting and not to be sued again. I followed through with the lawsuit with my sole intention of making Animal Welfare League have to open up all their books, their files, their cabinets, but most of all, their doors, to not only let the public in to see if their stray is there, but for inspection, which they never do. After my $20,000 lawyer to defend myself was one step from accomplishing that goal of them having to open their doors and computers, they dropped my lawsuit. How interesting. I got a second job to pay that, for the lawyer to defend me, and all to do was to get the evidence from Animal Welfare League. In my opinion, Animal Welfare League loves lawsuits. Animal Welfare League has paid almost six, excuse me, $600,000, 2023, just to law firms. And I quote the July 14th, 2025 Chicago Tribune. Animal Welfare League, led by President Chris Higgins, reported on its most recent tax form for 2023 that the bills to Nixon Peabody Law Firm made up of 15% of all its expenses that year. Animal Welfare League paid Nixon Peabody about $212,000 in 2020, $348,000 in '21, and $489,022, end quote. And Nixon Peabody might not be their only law firm. Again, I quote, records do show a sharp increase in legal fees from about $6,000 to, excuse me, 2016 to about $109,000 in 2017. That's where they got their start, when they began letting the entire public down. Since 2017, as well as many, many others, have expressed their concern with Animal Welfare League. Are you not aware of that? Are you not aware of them and their reputation? You're the trustees, and you're the people that the town relies on. And the Buck fam, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. You haven't seen the article in the front page of.
Your time is up.
About the Bucks.
I'll give you 30 more seconds.
I appreciate that. It actually, it seems to me that your chief of police, as well as your attorney, village attorney, have not read the contract. The only excuse that came up was doing something, making anything with them. I, in short, I'll keep it short. The bottom line is making you aware and to ask yourself if Animal Welfare League is complying with the law. If they are, they wouldn't have to hire law firms, now would they? All in my opinion.
Thank you. I think it's, I think it's important just to clarify that the Animal Welfare is not within the boundaries of the Village of Oklaun. And we do not have, our contract is for us on how to handle with stray dogs. I've been to that facility on a number of occasions, and it's sad. I'm a dog lover. I've had them all my life. But unfortunately, there's a lot of abandoned stray dogs that have to go somewhere, and there's hundreds, sometimes hundreds. And a lot of them are undesirable adoptions. They're large dogs, they're older dogs, they're pit bulls. The smaller dogs are easily adoptable, that's what I'm told. I'll look at our ordinances, but our ordinances apply to us, the Village of Oklaun, and our police department. And you know, our police department, okay, is often charged with picking up stray dogs. We have no facility here in-house to handle them. We take them to Animal Welfare, which is the closest facility. If I were to take, or our policemen were to take dogs to far-out facilities, we're taking an officer off the street for the, whatever distance it is and the distance back. That facility provides the Village of Oklaun and the police department a place to house the dogs. I agree with you. It's sad. I don't want to get into a discussion about it. I'm just making a point.
When a person has proof it's their dog, they go there, they're very same pay.
Uh huh.
Show them proof, they don't give your dog back.
Sir, I don't want to, I understand, I understand. But they, I don't have, okay, I don't want to get into an argument. I appreciate you coming out, stating your case. I see you have the press here. Enough discussion on it. I sympathize with your situation, sir. If my dog, somebody asked me the other day how my dog was, I said, I wouldn't take a million dollars for him. So I understand the heartbreak and the pain that you went through, but the Village of Oklaun has only so much responsibility over Animal Welfare. We provide policing services to the Village of Oklaun, and part of that is we will pick up stray dogs rather than just let them roam the streets, and we take them somewhere. And that's the place we take them.
Mayor, may I comment, please?
Joan Levery? Joan?
We have another one? Oh, several more, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interfere with this.
Hi, I'm Joan Lindsey. I'm an Elsa resident.
Okay.
I just have two short things to say. Today, I looked at Animal Welfare League's stray page. There were five dogs posted that were all taken in yesterday, and not one of them had a location of where they were picked up. I know, I'm not saying they were picked up here or whatever. That is ridiculous, that they don't even attempt to put that information out so people can look for their dogs.
Again.
The second thing is, whenever a dog is posted on any of the Oklaun pages saying, oh, I found this dog, you should see the comments. Don't take it to Oklaun Police Department because they're going to take it to Animal Welfare League. There's so many people that know the reputation of that place, and it's horrible when dogs end up there, and then they never come home. Those are the only things I really have to say, but I hope it changes.
It's not the police department, it's the.
Michelle Broderick?
If you have to take it there, that's the place where you guys take it. You gotta have a rule to it, to that place, you gotta have 72 hours.
Michelle Broderick?
Okay, next.
Give the dog back to the person. They ain't the office.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Michelle Broderick. I will be representing AB Restorations, Inc., tonight, specifically relating to a request for solicitor's permit in the Village of Oklaun. I'll start by explaining the business. We have been licensed with the Village of Oklaun since 2018 and have been members, as well as supporters, of the Oklaun Chamber of Commerce since 2019. There are two parts of our business. First, we're a full-service general contracting company, fully licensed, bonded, and insured. The second part is a roofing contractor and hold a current roofing license from the state of Illinois. This allows us to work on commercial and residential roofs properly and legally. We are able to provide our customers with the best roof inspection and installation available due to potential and experience that we hold. Today, we are requesting the solicitor's permit so we are able to canvass the neighborhood and establish who may need an experienced roofing contractor. I personally am a resident of Oklaun, and I have individuals that knock on my door not holding permits. When I look them up, they don't have the proper licenses on my family's doors and my friends' also. So I would like the opportunity to educate and service my community by giving them an honest, fair, and professional assessment of their roof. Many other companies want to roll the dice, take a chance to see if the homeowner's insurance company approves a roof through their insurance. In many of these cases, this doesn't happen, and the homeowner is abandoned by that company and never reappears. Or worse, the repairs are done incorrectly, leading to costly repairs in the future. Our BBA-plus accreditation and complaint-free award speaks for our company, as well as our good standings with Illinois, that we are reputable and professional. Our local office, located above the Hallmark Store on 107th and Cicerone, is another reminder and reassurance to the Oklaun homeowners that we are local and nearby if they ever need assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shay?
Um, I'm, no, no.
Jaclyn?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hi. My name's Jaclyn Masalco. I'm here to talk about some of the animal issues, stray issues in particular within the village. I am a hometown resident. I'm not an Oklaun resident, but close enough. I also help with stray dog recovery and loose dog recovery for many years. I printed your ordinance from your website, and it states that impound procedures, disposal, and redemption fees. It shall be the duty of the police department of the village to impound any stray dog or cat found running at large upon the streets, alleys, public places, parks, school grounds, or upon properly belonging to any person other than the owner. Such dog or cat shall be humanely disposed of by the police department or relinquished to Animal Welfare League, if not redeemed, within 72 hours. After the apprehension of the dog, when the owner of the dog or cat impounded is known, notice shall be given by telephone or by mail to the last known address. If the owner of any dog or cat impounded shall claim such dog or cat, supporting such claim by proper evidence of ownership, and shall exhibit a current duly issued license for such dog or cat, the police department shall redeem such dog or cat to the true owner therefore upon receipt of boarding fees and a penalty of $10. If the owner does not have a current rabies inoculation or dog or cat license, he shall be required to deposit a fee to cover the cost of the rabies inoculation and the dog or cat license plus payment of the $10 redemption fee. There's been several cases that have actually hit the media lately, one including Mr. Buck's dog, and then there was another dog by the name of Jack, a French bullterio. Their owners both came to the police department, who brought the dogs to Animal Welfare League, and asked them for help in recovering their dogs. It had been less than 24 hours that they had contacted your police department, and your police department told them, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do. You're not even following your own ordinance. Your ordinance says the dog belongs to the city, to Oklaun, for the first 72 hours, not Animal Welfare League. And when these owners are crying that their dogs are being held from them and being told, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do, you're not even following your own ordinance. Nor are you following Illinois state law that also says the same thing, that the dog belongs to the municipality, and you should be holding the dog here for 72 hours.
Ma'am, your time is up. I'll give you a couple more seconds.
There are other municipalities that have created holding facilities within their police departments. They have cages, they have volunteers, and they successfully reunite many dogs with their owners, less than 24 hours from the time they take that dog. It also prevents other dogs in the shelter from having to be put down because another dog is coming in, and it helps with the overpopulation at the shelters for these dogs to be held, when most of the time, an owner comes forward within hours, sometimes minutes, of their dog getting loose, especially on social media and Facebook, where there's a lot of lost dog.
Could you wrap it up? I've let you go more than three minutes.
Sure.
We understand. First off, if, I was a policeman here for many, many years before I went over to the dark side and became a politician. We require our residents to purchase a dog, an Oklaun license.
Yes.
For the dog. They're cheap, they're two bucks.
I purchased one in hometown, my city, every year.
And when, and when we pick up a dog with a license, that policeman calls that person that the dog is here, and we can hold them maybe here in the vestibule. If they don't have a license, we don't have any means, okay, to locate the owner. Okay? If they go to Animal Welfare, if they go, if they go to Animal Welfare, they have the ability, if they're chipped and that, okay. Now, it appeared to me, counselor, that as I read state laws, our ordinances may be in conflict with the state law.
No, I don't think they are.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
You're not allowed to be in.
State requires them to hold the dog for so many hours and proof of ownership before they turn them over.
I don't, I don't, I don't have the state law or the ordinance right in front of me.
Okay.
I have it here, actually.
Okay, well, listen, I gave you three minutes. You've made your case. I appreciate it. We're going to get on with.
The state law does also say that Animal Welfare League is to turn the dog back over to the police department, the police department is to facilitate.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Jen?
It's not a time for argument, okay? I appreciate your time, your energy. Do you have any other public comments?
Jen?
Hi.
Hi, Jen, how are you? Oklaun resident?
I'm going to time around so that I don't annoy everybody.
Okay.
I am an Oklaun resident. I also, I'm going to piggyback off of some of the things that Jaclyn stated. Let me start my timer so I know.
We have your time.
I'm not good at rambling.
I'll let you know.
Okay, I'm sure you will. So to piggyback off of what Jaclyn was saying, so I also work on, I recover lots of strays all over the Chicago South suburbs and into Chicago. I've caught five dogs in the past week that I've tried to get home. I know that we no longer have an animal control officer. I do know that some of the CSOs have now taken over that role. I hope there will be better training. I have interacted with some of them. They're very polite, but you can, you can see that with other officers, they don't know where the scanner is, the scanner's not working. People don't know what to do when the scanner, when the microchip doesn't, isn't registered, things like that. To piggy, to talk about the registration, I'm a really responsible person. If you saw my dog, he's got, he's got a GPS collar on, all this sort of stuff. I have never seen anything put out by the village about this registration thing. I literally never knew that that was even a thing existed, so I hope that there can be some more marketing for that sort of stuff, just so that people are aware. Unfortunately, usually it's the people that don't lose their pets that have that stuff, and not the people that are losing their pets. There are facilities like Blue Island and other locations, Markham, unfortunately, they do go to Animal Welfare League as well. There are, Blue Island has a great system where they actually hold their animals. And to get to the point of, and I'm not going to get into the whole Animal Welfare League thing about it, but I find it interesting that I have seen people post dogs that they have found in other locations, have gone to Animal Welfare League to drop them off, and this is just, I'm just pointing out what I've heard, so, you know. They say they won't accept it, they say go to Oklaun, because Oklaun pays their bills. They don't say that, but I understand that they need to be, that they need to have some supplement to take care of these animals. But I hope the village realizes that some of these animals don't come from these facilities because it's been stated by the people that have taken them there. I'd also be curious to know how many, what the transparency is on the animals in terms of what we're getting charged for a stray hold fee when you don't know what the outcome of that animal was. So in a sense, monetarily, the village could be getting charged for animals that were then possibly adopted by somebody else or picked up by their owner and still getting charged an excess amount of money. It's, unfortunately, I think probably the ordinances are from when it wasn't a pandemic, we have animals running everywhere, and it's unfortunate for all these animals. But the goal of reuniting them, and it's, to me, if you can charge, I don't even know what the ordinance is. I live here, I do this all the time in multiple towns. If you can charge somebody $50 for a stray hold fee instead of charging, instead of paying Animal Welfare League $600 for a stray hold fee or whatever it ends up being for that amount of time, that seems like a better deal. Right?
Thank you.
So I hope that some of those things can be addressed, so.
Thank you.
I still, my time up? I've only, I still got two minutes left.
Should we time you here?
Who's trying to cheat me on my time? I still got two minutes on my timer.
No, you don't. Thank you.
Oh, I don't?
No.
Three minutes, not five.
It's three minutes. It's three minutes.
Oh, I thought they said it was five. I'm sorry.
Three minutes. Well, thank you.
Your timer's right.
Cam, anybody else?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on with our, our agenda tonight. Does any trustee have any problem or issue with anything on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the closed meeting minutes, 2025-03, dated July 22nd, 2025. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
An approval, approval of regular meeting minutes, 2025-13, dated August 26th, 2025. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business by trustees. District Two, Alex?
Yes, I know that everybody enjoyed themselves at the Village Ball Musical Fest. I want to compliment trustee Mallow and all of the people in the special events, our village staff and everybody that went out to this event. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, tremendous event, a lot of fun, a lot of people having a good time. And I will tell you that one of my favorite memories of it is I was walking home past the police station, and I saw a couple holding their hands, getting ready to go in their car, and kind of dancing on the parking lot. And I just said, man, that's a really nice evening for people to be able to go out there and spend their time with their, with their loved ones. So, great job. I know that you guys worked very, very hard on it. I appreciate everything that you guys do to make that a very big success, and I just, I can't, I can't say how proud I am. how, how, how proud I am of the village, be able to put on an event like that, and make it safe, make it affordable, so, great job, and thank you to all that worked on it. I think that you're gonna hear a lot of compliments on it, I've just been listening to people in the neighborhood talking about how, how great an event was, so thank you for doing that. We have a consent agenda, item C, and last village board meeting, we accepted Flood Brothers' disposable bid for waste hauling services because they were the lowest responsible bid. Flood Brothers will take over the waste hauling responsibilities on October 1st, and I'll tell you that when you're in, a village trustee and, and, and working at the village, a mentor of mine, Alex Kazimir, as I said, make sure that the trash gets picked up, that the police fire it up for a phone call, and that the snow gets removed. So, this is a big change for us in the village, and I'm very confident after talking with the staff, that Flood Brothers will do a good job, if not better. But here, here's the thing that I like about the contract, and what people need to understand about our staff here, they, they took a lot of time and due diligence to negotiate a good contract for the residents of the village, and what it means is for senior citizens and residents with qualified disabilities, their quarterly rate will go down from $67.44 to $58.65. It's a 13% decrease, so that's, that's a good first start. And then for all other residents, your quarterly rate will drop from $76.74 to $69, a savings of about 10%. In additional lower rates, I just described Flood Brothers will also provide curb site pickup for electric waste, things like TVs, refrigerators, and washing machines for a small fee. There will be a full list of eligible items that will be posted on our village website, and I believe, Bill, you'll have that up and going soon for the residents?
Before the end of the week.
Thank you. Over the next few weeks, the residents will receive a letter from Flood Brothers with details on the collection process and reminders about proper use and placement of carts for refuse, recycling, and landscaping. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact our Public Works Department or Flood Brothers directly, you can find contact information for both on our website. And another resident did share with me, because you tend to have close relationships with the people that deliver your mail and pick up your garbage, that he was talking to his garbage, waste disposal driver, and the driver is going to end up working for Flood Brothers and staying in the Village of Oak Lawn, and they've done a very good job at recruiting and retention, so I think it's all very positive, I know it's a difficult decision to make, and again, our staff, Bill, you guys did a great job at negotiating a great contract, I appreciate all the work that you've done, I know that, and anytime there's a changeover of business, there will be some bumps in the road, but I'm sure that you and your team will continue to work through it, so, very good job, thank you, that concludes my business.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Mallow, District Three?
Thank you, mayor. Trustee Olenicek, thank you for the compliment, it does take a village to, to put that event on regarding the Fall Music Fest, it's a year in the making, it just, it's already started for next year, so I just want to thank, and, and, and thank you for, for giving me the opportunity, the rest of the board, to be able to run with this. It is, it is something for our village, it is something for the Village of Oak Lawn, I know others are there as well, family, friends, that come in to, to enjoy that time, that weekend. I just want to make mention of the, of the sponsors, because this is a fully sponsored event, this is not taxpayer money. Staff does a phenomenal job, year after year after year, of making sure that the sponsors are there, they do get to enjoy the sponsor tent, but it, it is something that they pay for. It's a tremendous amount of money that, that takes all those bands and everything that we do regarding that. So just for a second, I just wanna, because we did have some diamond sponsors, we mentioned them at every, every stage introduction for the bands, we did mention the diamond sponsors, which is Chris Burke Engineering, M&amp;N 89 Trucking, which sponsored the beverage tent, Oak Lawn Bank and Trust, right next door to the village here, Old National Bank, Robin Companies Realty, Studio G C. Those diamond sponsors really, really stepped up to be able to put the money into, into this fest. Some of the gold sponsors that necessarily didn't get their name mentioned, there are still, and there's way more than I, I, I asked to read them all, but I was told that maybe that would take a little more time, I didn't know we were gonna be here till eight o'clock at this point, but, so. Advocate Christ Medical Center is a gold sponsor, Benchmark Construction, Deconstruction, ECC Demolition, Flood Brothers Disposal, Harbor Contractors, Lakeshore Beverage, Marquette Bank, Oak Lawn Employee Credit Union, Skyline Restoration, 1-800-BOARDUP, and William Quinn and Sons Land. So, just with that, I, I just want to make sure that people understand that village staff donates their time to make this thing run smoothly, so that there's no hiccups, I know chief had, had mentioned there was one little scuffle, but that was really it. So during this time that we make this thing as safe as possible, we are, the residents feel safe, and, and I'm, I'm happy that they're able to enjoy that time for all three days. Maybe they can make it for each day, or maybe they make it one day, but we try to make it the best we can for each individual. The last thing I wanted to mention is, is regarding Park Lawn and the Courage Program, which isn't advertised enough, but that event is, you know, sponsor, or the sponsors do, we do donate to those charities to help them with their, their yearly, and as I told Mark the other day, I said their Queen of Hearts is going crazy, so sometimes that money just doesn't look as much as their Queen of Hearts, but it is something that we've been doing for years and years and years, and will continue to support Park Lawn and the Courage Program, so, that's really all I have for tonight. Just again, thank you to our staff for such an amazing event, give us that opportunity to do that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Paul, and I, I just have to comment, I've been going to these things, even pleased them since they started in the mid-'80s, and by far, by far, this event, this concert was the best I've ever been to, and I think it's important to mention that no tax dollars are used to point this out, it's done through our sponsors, Tom, I think over $300,000 in sponsorships this year-
That's correct.
-which is amazing to our business community that they, they are so generous in sponsoring this. It also pays for the concerts throughout the summer-
That's correct. Our Village Green, am I correct? That's correct, all the special events that we have are, are really covered by the Sunday concerts, the Sand on the Green event, the Fourth of July Parade, everything that we do, it comes from the donations from these, this event here.
Thank you, excellent job. District Four, trustee Pembroke?
Thank you, mayor. Also, I want to congratulate Paul Mallow and his events committee on a fantastic Fall Fest. I want to thank the Village of Oak Lawn staff, Public Works Department, and all our first responders for making the Fall Music Fest a, a safe and very fun event to attend for our residents here in Oak Lawn. And the last thing tonight, the board is gonna be voting on amending the village traffic code, most specifically bringing the village traffic code in line with the state of Illinois laws dealing e-bikes and e-scooters, which are two different things. I want to thank our legal and administrative team for their diligence, working on these amendments, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, trustee. District Five, trustee Stocker?
Yeah, I, I just want to, I've been going to the fest as well for many years, and although many of the previous fests have been dynamite, I, this is the best one I've ever attended. Part of it was weather, but you can't do anything about that. What you can do is have great bands, controlled crowd, very well-controlled, and good support from the whole village, and I'm really pleased with all you did, Paul, thank you very much. That's all I got to say.
Well, thank you, trustee. And District Six, trustee Sock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a few things tonight. One, I just want to mention, our, the police department is now accepting application, you can go onto the village website, and there'll be a link, you can apply directly from there. It's nice to get this out to the village residents, anybody that's, you know, considering joining the police force, you know? We'd love to have policemen from our own town as our, our newest and greatest, so it's out there on the village website for anybody who wants to look into that. Secondly, I want to talk, the pie retention project is going to start up November 1st, that's in my district, this has been in the works for, I'm gonna say 20 years, I, I can't even go far, as far back as it is, the fact that we're gonna be breaking ground on this is a massive accomplishment, and village manager, Falen, gets a lot of credit for it, when he was trustee all those years, he was putting in hours and hours on that, and I just got to be lucky to be here when it's getting pulled across the finish line, but we are going to do a community meeting in October, a date will be announced, so anybody in our district or anybody that wants to come to that meeting, there'll be details about construction, traffic, everything, right? So people will be able to give input, talk, listen, our engineering firm will be there, the mayor and myself will be there, and other village representatives, so that'll be sometime in October, but I just want to let everybody know now. Thirdly, the Knights of Columbus will be on the street corners, September 20th and 21st, the Tootsie Roll Drive, it's what it's better known as, but all the funds raised that day go to help people with special needs. We raise a lot of money on that day just from standing on the street corners, everybody volunteers, goes out there, and we're fortunate enough to have 95th and Cicero, the council I belong to here in Oak Lawn, so if you see them out there, throw a dollar in a can, and hopefully we get some good weather for that. And then lastly, you know, Fall Fest, again, I, just gonna agree with everything everybody said, I think one of the things that I love about it is there's so many of the village employees and staff that volunteer their hours, they're not out there getting paid, they're, they're volunteering, we sign up to volunteer. You know, I do a shift, you know, at a, at an entrance or selling beer tickets, everybody is out there doing something at some point during this weekend, and then I, I got to see the command station that our police set up, up on the roof, and the safety being provided and the officers, you could not be standing in that area out there and not look and see a police officer. The, the level of safety being provided out there is bar none, like the best you'll find at any event, I mean, every event will have a couple people around, you, you couldn't look around and not see an officer, and then our fire department has our paramedics walking around with their med kits on them, if something happened and somebody needed something, you're, you're seconds away from getting help, so, you know, we, we've all, I'm the last one to speak, so you've heard it all, but, you know, it's, it's just a great event, trustee Mallow and his committee did a great job, and I, I agree with everybody else, I've been coming to this a long time, I know weather was part of it, but the bands and just the whole environment this year was, was top-notch. Nobody mentioned that, that beautiful, I don't know how long it took staff to lay out that photo op right next to the sponsor tent there, I can't tell you, when I was sitting there, there had to be 70 people come up and take pictures, and everybody's like, "My God, this is beautiful." So, I mean, you know, that, that was incredible, I don't remember having such a big display there before, but again, just something every year that you just go, "Wow, something new," and, you know, that was it this year, so, that's it, includes my report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you. Mayor, we'll try to make everybody say that again next year.
Yeah, we'll tape all that for next year, because he'll do a better job, even better. All right, village managers report.
Thank you, mayor. Not to belabor the point, but on the Fall Festival, I think it's important to the history of the festival the mayor referenced, going back to the 1980s, my involvement began in 2005, 2006, and at that time, we looked at the financials, costing the village taxpayers between 50 and 75,000 a year to put the festival on, and it was a great festival, I mean, a lot of the same elements that are present today were present then, but since that time, I, I ran the numbers, a couple years ago, we've raised more than a half million dollars for a couple of charities from the proceeds, in addition to funding all of the other events, so as has been said already tonight, all of our special events are paid for from this event, and it's, it's the business community and our vendors, the vendors are a large component of the, the sponsored donations, so are the businesses, and then of course the volunteer component is, is certainly a big financial benefit. The public works team led by Bill Meyer, community development team led by Gary Godino, William Quinn, our landscaper, we can't go without giving them credit, they, they provided a lot of the things trustee Sock spoke about, to bring it all together, and the, one of the best things I like about it is more and more people speak about the, the grounds and what they look like, as much as they talk about the bands, and you almost, if you're there in the evening, sometimes you, and you look around and you see all the lights, you forget it's the Village Green that we look at every day, or the parking lot of the library, I mean, it's that really transformed that much. So again, I want to thank everybody involved, it was a great event, it's, you know, the community really responded, I think it's been said many times, since Sunday, we had more people there on Sunday than we've had on any Saturday in recent history, so, unfortunately, most of the people who came to speak about the Animal Welfare League give less, but, and I was tempted to ask the chief to speak during the public comments, but I was gonna wait until this time, but Lorraine, I know you're an avid dog lover, an avid anti-welfare league not lover, so I figured you'll represent here, but the chief, if you could, chief, address some of the things that-
I didn't know they were gonna, I came for scooters.
No, 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 I know, but-
Well, you got double your money.
Yeah, right, two for one for you tonight, but I know you have a long history yourself, you're a big dog lover and have dogs, so, yeah, so chief, if you could just address some of the points that were made.
Well, I'll, I'll try to keep, I'm glad the village attorney was now a part of being attacked instead of me, so that's, that's a good thing. First, I just like start off, most of you know me, what a lot of people don't know, former chief Illinois over knows, I was a candidate officer for eight years, there's probably isn't a bigger dog lover in the police department than me, so just to caveat that. I guess I'll start with Mr. Buck and his daughter, the issue with them, and they didn't read the whole story in the south town, the reason they couldn't get their dog back was because Mr. Buck brought that dog back from another state and had no proof of ownership, medical records, or vaccinations. So the reason he wasn't allowed to take his dog right away is because he couldn't provide any of that, that is specifically stated in the Illinois Animal Control Act, and as is also stated in our ordinance, so they can't get their dogs back if they don't provide a rabies vaccination, that's just a matter of personal safety. And the second story that they referenced, I believe it was a mini terrier, or whatever the dog was, it was the same thing, they knew, we knew who they were, but they never got vaccination records. As soon as they agreed to let animal welfare vaccinate the dog, they got the dog back. As far as the contract, I did review the contract, I know how much a dog costs, we only have to pay for three days, we're not paying for everyone else's dogs, it's a three-day limit, that's part of the contract, that was one thing they said I had to insert. So I did review the contract, I contacted the Illinois Department of Agriculture, who regulates animal shelters, they had a valid license, I called the Illinois Department of Animal Agriculture, uh, Illinois Department of Agriculture about animal welfare, they said they had no open issues with them, so, and then I had the attorney review it, he said it is kind of boilerplate, but if you, I had no issues with it, go ahead, and so I did. So that's where, you know, our even, our ordinance even states, you have to provide rabies vaccination, that's usually where the issue is. If you can provide ownership and documentation that dog's been to a vet and been vaccinated, get the dog back. And one thing I would like to say is, because everyone likes to point out the negative, we did have a positive interaction with welfare, and one of the pups was out at, last, two Sundays ago, at our concert, we had three dogs that were brought in, and the reason we can't just give these dogs right away without some type of proof of ownership, because when these dogs were brought in, there was someone else here filing a separate police report on a separate incident, and literally tried to take the dogs from our coat officer, saying they were hers, but she couldn't tell me, or she couldn't tell the officer where they were from, what their names were, and the officer was like, "No, I can't give these dogs." It got to the point where we actually had to put the dogs in the police garage and get her off the property because she literally tried to take one. So we sent the dogs to Animal Welfare, and within a week, all three were adopted by staff, and one was actually out at the summer concert, saying hello to everyone, so, I understand there's, there's some history with animal welfare, but in my tenure so far as chief, I haven't had any issues. There were, like I said, with Mr. Buck, it's a long story there, and I'm not gonna go into it, but it's, it's been documented, the issues with that were no, no proof of ownership, no proof of vaccination. And as far as animal control, yes, right now, as you are aware, our animal control officer resigned, he took a position with another municipality, we are in the process of hiring another one, and as far as the animal chip reader, they all, all of our code enforcement officers know how to use it, and it's the state-of-the-art one, I think I just paid a couple hundred bucks for it, it can identify any chip, that's, it's like the latest iPhone. So, we are making an effort, I understand that a lot of people are sensitive about dogs, as am I, but as a police chief, I have to weigh dog safety versus public safety, so we do the best we can with what we have, it's not perfect, but I think our intentions are good, and we have everything documented.
Okay, thanks, chief.
And that's all I have on that.
Record that.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, thank you, chief, for explaining that. We'll move on to the consent agenda, all items on the consent, consent agenda are routine and brought forward at the direction of board of trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will re- If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees' approval to waive the fees associated with the use of village resources for the Saint Catherine Charger Crawl to be held Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the estimated cost is two hundred and eighty dollars. B, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-six, and ordinance amending Title XI, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter Nine, Bicycles and Tricycles of the Oaklawn Village Code relative to low-speed electric bicycles and electric scooters and other related changes. C, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-seven, and ordinance amending various sections of Title VIII, Public Health and Sanitation, Chapter Five, Garbage, Refuge, and Electronic Recycling of the Village Code of Oaklawn. D, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-eight, and ordinance authorizing the Village of Oaklawn to enter into a field use agreement with Oaklawn Baseball relative to the lease of certain real property owned by the Village of Oaklawn, baseball for baseball and softball use, that's Coe Field. E, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-nine, and ordinance providing for the issuance of, not to exceed, two hu, two million five hundred thousand dollar general obligation line of credit to the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, to pay the cost of capital projects in and for the village, providing for the security and for payment of said, and authorizing the sale of said, not to, this is kind of written in silly, to the Oaklawn National Bank. F, resolution twenty-five fourteen sixty-one, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of the obligation to be issued by the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois. G, resolution twenty-five fourteen sixty-two, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving the purchase of one new Ford Explorer Police Interceptor to be put into service for the Fire Chief vehicle from Napleton Ford, Oaklawn, for a total price not to exceed sixty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-two cents. H, resolution twenty-five fourteen sixty-three, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving the authorization and execution of agreement with pathfinder construction strategies to provide project management consulting services for the construction of the joint Village of Oaklawn Public Works Facility and the Oaklawn Regional Emergency Communication, that's OREC nine-one-one center, located at fifty-five thirty-two West Ninety-Eight Street, Oaklawn, Illinois. And I, resolution twenty-five fourteen sixty-four, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving an agreement for services with Grizz Pest Management, for pest management services for residential alleys, commercial alleys, and public spaces within the Village of Oaklawn, in an annual amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand forty dollars. Motion, please.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
B.
Item B.
I'd like to...
B?
Item B.
Can we also remove E and F?
P, P?
E is an F, or F is a Frank.
Okay. All right, we're, we're voting on everything except B, E, and F. Roll call, please.
Trustee Desmond.
Tim?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. A, no, B, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-six, and ordinance amending Title XI, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter Nine, Bicycle and Tricycles of the Oaklawn Village Code relative to low-speed electric bicycles and electric scooters and other related changes. Discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just want to summarize some of the important points, and it's a, it's a long code, and there's a lot of amendments throughout it, but the important things is we're addressing the e-bikes and e-scooters, basically, which are two different things. I'm, biggest concern with me is these e-scooters. But anyways, the code, in summary, the code redefines the definition of bicycles, it includes three classifications, about the speeds of the bicycles, how far, how fast they go. There's also low-speed electric scooters, those are capped at ten miles per hour, that's their maximum speed. In this code, they'll be explicitly banned from use within the village pursuant to state law, that's the State of Illinois. Electric scooters exceeding ten miles an hour are banned from the village streets and roads unless they are properly titled and registered in Illinois, and minors under the age of sixteen are prohibited from operating such scooters. And then there's some broader classifications in the village code to clarify, e-bike scooters, similar devices, but the important part is they must generally follow the same rules of the roads as motor vehicles. Some key parts in the ordinance says the village code distinguishes between general electric scooters and low-speed scooters. That has to do with the speed ten miles an hour, those doing greater than ten miles an hour. Low-speed scooters, as I said earlier, prohibited in Oaklawn per state law. The general electric, which are more powerful scooters, with speeds in excess of ten miles an hour. The operator must be at least sixteen years of age and possess, and possess a valid driver's license, cannot be used on roads with speed limits of thirty-five miles an hour greater, must have proper front and rear lighting for night use, has functioning brakes, no sirens except on an official vehicle, can't have passengers, we see a lot of kids riding double on the scooters in the streets, no passengers, prohibited carrying loads that may impair your control of the vehicle, or the scooter. Can't be used on sidewalks, they can cross the sidewalk, but they can't ride on the sidewalk. Prohibit obstruction of streets, street or sidewalks, laying them down or whatever. Prohibit clinging to the, clinging to a vehicle, there's always a problem with skateboards, kids sketching, grabbing vehicles and riding on their skateboard, but they can't do it with scooters, or e-bikes, or bicycles, or whatever. Riders must travel in single file, I know that's always a big debate, okay, and they should be keeping to the right, even though they still have a right to the lane, though, with the driver, so understanding the rules of the road is very important. Riders must stop before crosswalks, at a sidewalk, or coming out of an alley or driveway.
Motion, here.
And must yield to pedestrians and use hand signals, and turning or stopping or whatever is part of the, part of the state code. And riders must obey all traffic laws and traffic signs. So I think this is something that is very important for our village. As a trustee, I'm in favor of it. I know it's going to be, some people are going to be upset, because their kids have, or they've invested in bikes, scooters for their, for their children, but it's really a matter of safety, as far as I'm concerned. I'm hearing more and more parents talking about close calls, and, you know, there have been incidents, not in, in our village, I'm aware of, but in surrounding villages, where kids have been hurt on them, in accidents on their, on themselves, so I think it's, I think this is a good thing, and I hope the trustees will vote for it.
Thank you, trustee, and thanks for taking the leadership on this position.
Yeah, something's bothered me.
Or somebody got hurt, you know, so... Any other discussion?
I just want to commend trustee Pembroke, he's been working on this for at least six months. I know it's been a, a concern of yours, and I know that you've done your homework, and judging by what's going on throughout the state of Illinois, and just hearing some of the horror stories, and listening to some of the near misses that people are having, and people don't understand, these, these units are very, very quiet, so if you're out walking, you don't even hear them coming up because they're on electric. So, I, I think it's a great first step, and again, I know that you've worked very hard for it, and thank you for putting this legislation, I will be in favor of it.
Yeah, I think we found out that there's a lot of things the state has done that we didn't need, not only us, but the residents, the citizens of the state of Illinois didn't know about it, so it's kind of a big issue.
Any other discussion? All right, I believe we need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Sorry, trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Again, congratulations, trustee, for taking the lead on this. Okay. E, ordinance twenty-five fourteen forty-nine, and ordinance providing for the issuance of, not to exceed, two million five hundred thousand dollar general obligation line of credit of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, to pay the cost of capital projects in and for the village, providing for the security for and payment of said, not in, said, and authorizing the sale of said, not to, sale of said to Oaklawn National Bank. Too many nots in there.
Not should be noted.
Oh, okay.
Old National Bank.
I pulled that just to make you read it again.
Thank you. We got to fire whoever wrote this.
Not even hearing it.
All right, discussion.
Yes, Mayor, the attorneys have advised, they'd like a roll call vote on this item.
Okay. Okay, well, we got to, we need a motion.
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. F, resolution twenty-five fourteen sixty-one, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from the proceedings of an obligation to be issued by the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois. Discussion?
Same, same issue, Mayor, the attorneys have advised that we do a roll call vote.
Okay, motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Village Clerks report.
Disbursement Resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen, dated September ninth, twenty-two-five, in the amount of nine million four hundred thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Pay the bills, motion passes. All right, village presidents report, a couple of things. Thursday, nine eleven, you know, we have one of the biggest collections of steel from those World Trade Centers here with a, with a beautiful memorial to the many people who have died in that event, and we will be so, not celebrating is not the bad word, we'll be commemorating that day, Thursday, and nine eleven, at nine eleven AM, the police, the fire, and the VFW who hosts this event will be out there. And I would like to ask any residents that are free on the nine eleven to make an effort to be there, it's a very tribute and memorial service for those who have gone. I also have a proclamation here, whereas Public Law ninety, nine fifteen guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Terry Ford, or by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Oaklawn, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as the Constitution Week, and this was brought to my attention by the, our local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. With that, I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
So move. Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichak?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.